All right, tonight we have John Callahan, Danielle Juwenn, Martha Majewski, Bob Cooney, and myself, Mark Donovan. We also have our manager Lori Getz, assistant manager Valentina Mitterer, Bill Brennan, our solicitor, and Paul Bettinger, our engineer. We had a couple of executive sessions that I'm gonna add to your agendas. It's July 9th and today, July 10th, to discuss personnel, property acquisition, and litigation. Starting off the regular business meeting with the consent agenda, this is a motion to accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' June 12th, 2024 business meeting and June 27th, 2024 workshop meeting, including all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of June 30th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's report and payment bills. Motion to consider acceptance of the treasurer's report for period ending June 30th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from?
Yes, so for period ending June 30th, 2024, we have a general fund balance of just over 6.5 million. And year-to-date, we are at thirty, just over 38% of our expenditures, and we're at about 77% of our revenue. And we're basically, and we're in good shape. We're right on track.
Sounds about along with last year.
Yeah, and all the bills are reviewed and recommended for payment.
All right, great. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve disbursement stated July 10th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto our board discussion items. So division land development. Item number one is zoning hearing board application, 505 Valley Park Road. The applicant is seeking relief to allow for expanding of the existing non-conforming barn for limited residential purposes. And there's the sections listed below.
So the applicant, I believe the applicant is in attendance tonight. Great, so I will, if you just wanna come up to the microphone and introduce yourself if you wanna give them an overview. But basically, the applicant is seeking various relief to convert a barn that's on his property into an additional residential dwelling. I'll let you cover that, but the decision in front of the board is to make a motion to oppose the application or simply remain neutral.
And good evening. I'm David Colvin, 505 Valley Park Road, so just up the street. When we bought our property three years ago, we bought our property in Schuylkill Township specifically for a barn that sits on our one-and-a-half acre property. That barn, we envisioned, would be used one day for our son, who turned 16 today, who has special needs. He has intellectual disability, autism, and a very rare seizure disorder. And he's gonna live with us for the rest of his life, but we hope to use that barn as some semi-independent living for him. And so that's why we bought this property and spent a lot of money on it. Things have changed a little bit. My wife's father is terminally ill, and we're hoping to advance and accelerate the process of renovating the barn so that he and his wife can live on the property with us, so we can be there to support them in their time of need, and they can also reciprocate and support us with our son. So we fully respect and appreciate the zoning ordinances and everything within Schuylkill Township. We didn't know that the barn was non-conforming when we purchased the property, but what I can tell you is that the plans that we have to augment the barn are as minimal as possible, with as little disruption as possible. There's only one impacted neighbor, and that neighbor has signed a letter attesting to the fact that they don't oppose what we want to do. And we would ask for your favorable consideration on the application and move it to our friends in zoning, and we can talk about it there. I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
I don't have any questions. Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
No.
I'm looking to remain neutral. How does everybody feel?
Same.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks. Next one is 1500 State Road Aqua Pickering Preserve of Land Development request. The applicant seeking a waiver of land development for their proposed expansion project. The planning commission has reviewed and recommends approval of the waiver. Do you have any discussion on this? Great, okay.
Good evening. My name is Gina Gerber. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Aqua this evening. This is a property that you all are probably pretty familiar with. It's the East and West Pickering Water Treatment Plant. We are here this evening with regards to a request for a waiver of land development. I'm gonna briefly walk you through the improvements that we are proposing as part of this project, just to give you an idea of how minimal they are. And then I'm also joined this evening by Brennan Kelly, who can speak a little bit more to the specifics, should you all have any questions with regard to what's being done here. The improvements that are being proposed are in two phases. The improvements are with regard to the east water treatment plant. First phase is with regard to an expansion of the existing filter building. This building is not within the floodway or the floodplain. The second phase is the addition of a new clarification system, which is basically an open tank, an expansion to an existing electrical room. All in, the total increase to the impervious coverage with respect to this site is less than 1%. It's 0.78% increase in the impervious surface. So very small amount of actual impervious surface is being introduced with this particular project. Aqua has determined this improvement is needed in order to be able to continue with the viability of this, with this particular plant. They had some issues with regard to a large storm event a couple of years ago, and this is their way of being able to resolve that and make sure that this plant can continue servicing the three counties in which it currently serves going forward. So much-needed improvement in terms of what the actual impact is to the site, it's very, very minimal to the land disturbance. There is DEP permit applicable for this already, so they've already obtained that in order to be able to move forward with the improvements. They have a pretty expedited timeline. If I'm not mistaken, you all are looking to do this sooner rather than...
Within two years.
Sooner rather than later, yep, about two years. I can tell you that all of the site will remain compliant with the zoning requirements. In fact, it's way under in terms of the building coverage. They're proposing 4.6% when all is said and done. The ordinance permit's up to 40, so it's a big discrepancy there. And in terms of the lot coverage, they're only proposing 32%, we're up to 60% is permitted. So well within the confines of everything that's allowed on this particular site. So we, and just to, sorry, clarify one other thing. The stormwater design is underway. It is something that will be submitted to the township for review and approval as part of the permitting process, but the infiltration testing has already been done successfully on the site. So that's where we're at.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything else to add, or any questions from the board to clarify anything?
I know this was asked at the planning commission meeting, because I did attend the planning commission meeting. But Paul, can you explain why land development is needed for this? I mean, this sounds like it's just an addition, so why would land development need to be done for this?
It's a commercial property, so that automatically triggers any kind of land development. But, you know, in our review letter dated June 13th, 2024, based off the sketch plan application, Martha, we do recommend to it that the board supervisors provide a waiver of land development contingent that the applicant goes through the stormwater management and grading permit application that covers stormwater and zoning.
Okay, I did read that. I just wanted it on the record, that's all. Thank you.
Sure.
Normally, you see requests for waivers for individual items in the land development process under the SALDO. The SALDO authorizes land development itself to be waived in total. That's normally in circumstances where there's no negative impact on the public and, you know, in a situation like this. And land development is defined term in SALDO, including commercial, anything commercial.
I just wanna make, again, remind the public that I'm an employee of Aqua Services. I don't provide any support for Aqua Pennsylvania, but I do service, you know, Aqua, North Carolina, Virginia, and Texas. So I just would, I know we don't need a vote per se on this, but I'm gonna recuse myself from any discussion tonight.
If we are waiving land development, we do need a vote.
Well, I'm recusing myself from that.
Okay. Any further clarifications, comments, questions from the board? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to waive the land development process for this project at 1500 State Road. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Now, is there any further discussion from the board, from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All business. Let's see. Make a motion to approve Appendix A to Decision of June 12th, 2024, granting preliminary subdivision approval with conditions to Reeves Family Real Estate LP and Polig Builders LLC. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks. Is there any discussion on this item? There are some copies of the appendix here, if anyone would like to see them. And you can pass them around, look at them. I will clarify that it does generally just provides clarifications to some of the, what were considered vague conditions on our approval last month. So it's mostly just clarification. It does not truly amend the approval.
You guys know where I stand on this. One of the big things that...
Mike.
Oh, sorry. Saying you guys know where I stand on this. One of the big concerns I had there was the impact East Philip. And when I look at item five, where it says certain engineering comments and interpretations have been satisfied or are no longer relevant and applicable, given the preliminary plan approval issues of the Township Board of Supervisors, such as, and it refers to the qualifications of Lisa Thomas, the EAC recommendations, and review comments of SAFE, Joe Fiacco. SAFE Engineering is our traffic company. I mean, where I stand on this has been the same since day one, is that, you know, I feel like we're compromising the health and welfare of East Philip, and that those comments are applicable and should be upheld. And I don't think we are. And I don't wanna sit quietly by and approve this, so I'll be voting no on this one, because he did clearly say that...
Well, you know what, Bob? You voted no last week, or last month, so you shouldn't even need to vote on this.
You could say that, but I'm still gonna say what I said.
I know. I'm just saying, all this was was clarification from last month, and you already voted no.
Okay, I'm gonna say what I need to say. And I'm gonna put it on the record this time with my dissent in writing, what I have to say. That the, we were cautioned by the engineer, and to say that his issues are resolved, I'm not okay with, because this wasn't in there last month. This is new. So I do wanna comment on it.
All right, now, I would provide a clarification on, or a counter to that. The...
Can I finish what I'm gonna say, and then you can counter?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah. That's fine. Yeah, go. I thought you were done.
No, no, no. I've got a couple paragraphs here, because I'm not good winging it. I'm just gonna read it.
Then, go ahead.
So we were cautioned by the traffic engineer that we'd be contributing to an unsafe condition. East Philip was designed and built for, as a cul-de-sac for the number of units on that street. It's not laid out to be a throughway, which is what it will become if we allow this to go through. I'll still stand strong that the township made many mistakes that got us into the predicament that we're in now. When we allowed the developer's lawyer to write up the PRD ordinance and approve the ordinance, along with a sketch plan and the zoning map. It was brought up last month that somebody in the audience said, "That looks like spot zoning." I've always had my concerns of that. And I think we did something very wrong back then, and I don't think continuing to do wrong is gonna make it right. So I know that there are serious concerns about litigation, but I'd rather do the right thing and pay the price than continue to do the wrong thing and put our neighbors' health and safety at risk. I'm convinced that we were sold a bad bill of goods. We bought it, shame on us. The zoning changes combined with the language in the PRD, I think, are the root cause of why we are where we are. And again, our traffic engineers said that what we are doing regarding the use of East Philip as a throughway is unsafe and not necessary for this development. So again, I see no reason to keep making it easy for the developer to gain in profit at the risk of our residents. So that's it. I'll attach this to my dissenting vote.
Thanks. Now, I would provide a counter to a couple of those things. The proposed access through East Philip would not be a throughway. There is a proposed gate there, and a gate does not constitute a throughway. Second of all, number five, the clarifications regarding comments from our consultants. Some of our consultants provided comments that were beyond the scope of their general authority to make, and this clarifies that any of those comments that were beyond their general authority to make, including things that are not related directly to our ordinances, are irrelevant to the application and the approval. That's all I would clarify. Counter.
I'll just add that if you have 16, 18 homes on a street, and you're gonna add another 51 through that, I do consider that a major change to what that street was designed for. So I'm opposed. I think it's wrong. It's a wrongful take, I believe. And I think it was based on the mistakes we made in the past that we're paying for now. And I think we're continuing to do wrongs to cover up the wrong.
All right. So there's been a motion, a second, some discussion from the board. Any other further discussion from the board, anything from our consultants? Public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All business. Number two, discussion on the convenience store with gas ordinance. I'll let Lori take the lead on this one.
Okay, so this is a continuation of the conversation that we had at last month's workshop meeting. The workshop meetings are non-voting meetings, and the full board was not able to be present, so this is on the agenda so that we can continue that discussion and see what, if any, direction the board would like to give to the staff and the consultants.
Open it up for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, I wasn't on the board back when the gas station with convenience store gas, convenience store gas station ordinance was passed. It does appear, as brought to our attention by our residents, that there is some inconsistency. And, you know, based on collective recollection of the events that transpired in passing that ordinance, it does not seem as though there was an intentional discrepancy. It seems like the most expedient thing to rectify that would be to render those two ordinances consistent with the 200 feet from the property boundary. We have, as Paul mentioned at our workshop, we have done a review of all of the neighboring townships and their municipalities and their ordinances, and it, ours would still be the most restrictive ordinance in terms of placement of a gas station with respect to residential properties. So we are certainly not diminishing that. We would be adding to that and making that more conservative. I have concern with more substantively changing the ordinance without additional expertise and independent guidance as to why we would make a different setback versus the 200 that we already have in our ordinances. And I am concerned that if we were to do so, it would delay the enactment of that ordinance change. So that would be my direction to staff.
Agreed on all points. Yeah. I don't need to add anything. Well said. Thanks.
So then I suppose I just have, we can do one of two things. We can prepare it just, we can prepare it to make the language consistent. Now, the only question I have is, we've been talking about the, changing the word from residential dwelling to residential district. But the beginning of the sentence in the gas station ordinance says, "No lot maybe within 200 feet." The convenience store with gas refers to the pumps. Now, the reason for that is because that was added in. There didn't used to be anything in the ordinance pertaining to pumps. So do you want the pumps to be 200 feet? Should the pumps be the measuring point, or should the lot be the measuring point?
So can you explain what the gas, the pure gas station is? The pure gas station ordinance has...
No lot maybe within 200 feet of a residential district, and some other things. Yes.
No lot upon which a gas station sits?
The gas station.
Okay, no lot upon which. So if you have a lot, sorry.
Mike.
I apologize. So just hypothetically, if you have a lot, and you want to put a gas station on that lot, then you would need to have some intervening commercial property in between the gas station and the most, the closest residential property.
Or something else.
Institutional.
Commercial, non-residential, non-residential use, or something that's dual, right?
So my, and then my recommendation on this would be, I believe the intent in 2019 was to govern the pumps.
Right.
So I do think if you change residential dwelling to residential district, you would be making it as consistent as it can be with the gas station.
And I would note that...
And if, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have to be careful when we're changing, making changes to zoning ordinances, and Bill and Paul can chime in on this, but we have to be careful that we don't eliminate a potential use from any area in the township. And if you change, you get dangerously close to that if you change the word pumps to lot.
I can imagine there's locations in our township where you could still cite a gas station with a convenience store. Have we actually made that determination?
We have gone through it. We have gone through it. If you, yes, with the 200, the 200 feet from a residential dwelling, yes, we can.
With the pump?
With the pump, yes.
But if we were...
But the lot.
The lot?
Drastically.
But have we eliminated it from the top?
I think we've...
When we looked at it, we, the residents were asking for 500 feet.
No, 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 I'm not, that's not what I'm looking at.
Right, so that's what...
Yeah, no, that's what we looked at when we did our analysis of it, and that basically limited it to just a very handful of properties. And you still don't really understand how it would be situated with it. So that was when we looked at 500 feet.
Okay.
And then, I know that now we're talking about 200 feet again. So I don't know if 200 would be any different to allow anymore. I know 500 was very restrictive.
But when we were talking about, when we looked at it, so the 200 feet from the pump would not be, would not eliminate all of the properties. If we did, no lot maybe within 200 feet of residential district, I mean, that, that's...
It's very restrictive.
Yes. So it leaves, when we looked at it, and I know you were looking at 500 feet, but when we extrapolated that and looked at it, okay, but if we were looking at the lot, because he was focused on the distance, he was focused on the pump. So if you look at it with the lot, it doesn't leave very many areas.
If any.
But if we already have?
I'm just thinking of a couple intersections in our township, and I'm surprised, I'm surprised that, I'll turn this off. I mean, I'm just thinking of a couple intersections in our township, and I'm surprised that that's the case. For, by Forrest's, for example, I think they subdivided that. That could be, I'm not giving anybody any ideas.
But I don't think that's commercial.
Why wouldn't Forrest's be commercial?
There's residential across the street.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Which is within 200 feet.
So we're calling the street, okay.
Yeah, it pretty much eliminates it.
But if it already exists, does that matter?
You mean if the actual station exists, or if the ordinance for the gas stations exists?
What you're saying, what you're saying is that our ordinances have to allow for everything.
Yes.
But if it already exists and it's non-conforming, if we change the ordinance and it already exists and it's non-conforming, doesn't that cover us?
Yeah, but I'm not talking about existing gas stations that are non-conforming. What Paul was saying is that if we change the ordinance in this manner to make it lot rather than pump, then we could be eliminating the ability for that to exist in our township. What I was saying is, I was thinking that there were lots, like the area by Forrest's, for example, that were surrounded by commercial, that could actually fit that definition. But Mark is saying that it could not, because of the fact that the 200 feet would cross the road, and then it would be adjacent to a residential, a residential lot.
The road's not, the road's not a lot, so therefore it's...
But my question is, is if it already exists, if we change the ordinance...
It's forward-looking. So if everything went conforming, it's because we have a fair share, fair share responsibility in Pennsylvania to allow for basically any use somewhere. And it has to be in the future. If we ever had fully conforming lots everywhere across the township, what does that look like? Did we eliminate a use? And then we get, we lose...
Perspective use. So what you're, I think maybe the clarification you need to make is the prohibition, the prohibition is on future use, not, if we already have 14 gas stations in the township.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. If we are eliminating the ability for additional gas stations, then we are in violation of the law.
Yeah.
Okay. Given that, I want us to do what's not gonna make us in violation of the law. So if that is the case, then I would say, keep it the pump, but make it 200 feet from the property boundary.
And my biggest concern with them are the USTs, the underground storage tanks, and the gas pumps themselves. I mean, I don't know about how you guys feel, but those are my largest concerns of those things. And locating them as far as we can legally away from residential properties seems to be our goal, within the bounds of reason. Like, if we do expand it, like everybody said, we gotta have some kind of independent expertise weigh in on it.
So that was my other concern too, beyond just the pumps, was the vents that actually come out of those underground tanks. That's another source of benzene, which is really what we're concerned about. So it may be worth considering, not only just the pumps themselves, but whatever is venting out of the tank, whatever could be leaking, the thing we actually care about. So...
Worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario.
And I agree, because I don't think that that, if the intent back in, it was in 19, was to locate the pumps a certain distance, it wasn't really pumps, it was emissions, right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we think, we believe. Okay. So, right, so just to be clear, we're going to draft an ordinance revision to change the word dwelling to district in the convenience store with gas ordinance, and that is...
And we'll bring it up again. We'll bring it up again in further discussions if the board wants to move further on that. We can talk about it in a workshop, involve the public, and also maybe an independent expert.
And run it by the regional planning committee.
Okay. You know what? You just brought up a really good point. If something is allowed in the regional planning group, when we were working on the billboards bill, you remember that? The regional planning committee really liked where Schuylkill Township put that electronic billboard, because now that it's there and it's within the region, no one else has to be able to put that up.
That's not true. East Pikeville's getting a billboard because we're being forced to by the courts. We just lost a 10-year battle with that.
Really? Even with the regional planning?
Yep. They told us to F ourselves.
Okay, so that was actually put to the test then?
So if I can restate that, one of the concepts of regional planning was as long as one member of the regional plan had the use, the other members didn't necessarily have to have the use. And the courts have said, "That nice idea, but no, no thank you."
It depends on the use and who has the money to push a court lawsuit.
What about Lamar?
It's outdoor something or other. Yeah, they're doing that.
So it is an ironclad. There isn't any...
It's helpful, it's not, it's helpful if there are, if you have no apartments, and everybody around you has apartments, you probably get away with it. But if it's a more narrow constriction of use, it's not gonna save you.
It's a soft help, a soft bit of help.
No, I was just, I was just thinking about the whole gas station thing, but never mind. If...
Nuts. We wouldn't get away with it on gas stations.
Okay.
It was worth a try.
It was a very good, it was a fantastic thought. We just, but we, we just tested that for a decade.
Could, yeah. It's outdoor advertising versus East Pikeville or something.
East Pikeville has not brought that up in the regional planning committee.
I'm not surprised.
Okay. No, but it would be, it would be an interesting topic of discussion.
It would, yeah.
And I could reach out to my esteemed colleagues in East Pikeville and float that idea by the... And I could reach out to my esteemed colleagues in East Piclin and float that idea by them before I suggest that we include it on an agenda item, but it would be interesting.
But, and, and it was one of the reasons that Rusty, for many, many years, was touting people to join the regional planning committees, that, oh, you know, if you do this, you know.
It's more likely to float if you have all like certain types of, types of housing or something. So like if you have multifamily homes in the, right across the street from where you're trying to insist that you don't need to have more multifamily homes, you can, you can do that. But if you're, if you're touching on commercial uses, that tends to irk the courts.
Okay.
Because most municipalities already restrict those, those uses very heavily. And, um, as we do. And, uh, so we end up with not a lot of wiggle room left over once we get to. What's that? Amco.
Oh, okay.
In front of the Amco.
Yeah.
Yeah. They got their permits in and everything. It's all approved, done.
Okay.
A week, yeah. So, um.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Oh, no, no reason, that's, it's a good thought.
I apologize that I, I really thought that that would be helpful, but turned out to not be.
You know, about six months ago, I would have thought the same. You learn. So, uh, any further discussion on this one? All right. Um, new business, consider approval of roadway improvement project.
Laura, you, you know where to move from the, okay.
Yep. Um, uh, roadway improvement projects. We got, uh, Township Line Road, Green Lane, Jug Hollow Road and Creek Road here. Um. Lori.
So, um, this is before you, so normally every year we do come to the board and, and look to do some additional capital road projects after we've done paving. Um, you'll recall that due to the price of the bids this year, we rejected the paving bid, so we're not doing any paving of roads this year. We're doing oil and chip, but we're not doing our paving project. So in lieu of that, Nick has done, um, we've, we've moved up some projects that have needed to be done. Yeah, do you want to give a little, a little overview?
Hi, Nick.
How you doing?
I didn't see you back there.
Okay, four projects. Our two favorite roofs, Martha Township Line and Creek Road. Shoulder failure. That's Martha's fault, she drives a bus and that.
So it's, it's a long story.
But we, we have shoulder failure.
Sure.
Yeah. There's shoulder failure on, on them two roofs that we should.
Again?
Not as bad as we had.
Okay.
But it's, it needs attention.
Okay.
Jug Hollow, um, we're cleaning out a culvert, as you know, and actually tobacco is on, kind of on private property. Because there's no other way to access the culvert cause the culvert runs underneath Larry Palmer's house. So in the cleanup, we've eroded the bank on, on private properties. So I talked to Chris and he's willing to sign that we're allowed to go on his property to restore his bank. It'd have to be reviewed by you, Bill.
Yeah, we'll get into that, we'll.
But he, he's okay with it. If we have one more clean out down there, we're going to lose the whole bank down there at, on Jug Hollow. But that's the only way to access it, to get the silt out of this stream, because if we go around the back way, there's no way, it's all on private property, it's all choked down, so. And the final one is Green Lane Sinkhole. Um, it's over a sewer line, it's twenty-five feet deep. It's been happening basically since the development went in. Valley Forest Sewer Authority doesn't want anything to do with it. They say their pipe's fine. But this is where we're at. So.
Is this the one that you guys have been going back and forth with for years?
Yes. Yeah.
You keep filling it up with, uh.
Uh, we stabilized it a couple times, Bill, and then, uh, in one middle road, it keeps sinking. The sewer authority said they TV'd their line, that there's nothing wrong with their line. They're not accepting responsibility for it. So.
So the idea here is we obviously had a, we had a budget allotment for, uh, paving. We're not going to spend that money on paving this year, so we'd like to do these projects.
Yes, please.
So if anybody has questions or they want to look at it, you know, we, we have time. You know, if you, if you guys want to look at it before we do it, or.
Well, we can, we can go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, roadway improvement projects on the Township Line Road, Green Lane, Jug Hollow Road and Creek Road. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, well, any further discussion? Any other questions for Nick?
I, I guess, do we notify the sewer authority and tell them what our intent is?
Yeah, I'll talk to them.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Easy.
Curving.
Curving.
Yeah.
Um, we looked at this, at the budget last year, me and Lori. Uh, there's been some drainage problems down there. Um, so we'd like to do the thousand feet down in Spring Lane. Our, our five-year plan, Lamar, is now a ten-year.
Yeah.
Yes.
Continuing on.
I, we knew that was going to happen, yeah.
And this is a budgeted item.
Yes.
It is a budgeted item.
So, uh, yeah. Got no real questions. Does the board have any questions, comments? Public. Um, I will, uh, make a motion to authorize Township Roadmaster to begin Spring Lane curbing project. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
I'll second.
Fight over it, that's, that's fine. No, good talk. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. Item number three hundred, new business, is, uh, approval of an estimate from Kinsley Construction, the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for paving at Dawson Drive.
I think Paul and Lori could.
You don't need to tackle this one?
Yeah.
What happened there?
Yeah, so if you, you'll recall, so this is, uh, so Dawson Drive is technically a borough road, but we maintain it.
Well, half of it.
Half of it is. We maintain the entirety of the road due to a longstanding agreement that we've had in place for decades, I think, at, at this point. A couple of years ago, the borough, they started a construction project on the Eland Down Apartments. Um, and caused, there was a lot of, all of the construction traffic was on Dawson Drive. So it's been worn down as a result of that. So this price here reflects a, basically a three-way split of the total cost to pave the entirety of the road. The borough's ordinances require the contractor to pave half width. We'd like to do the entirety of the road. So we're going to pay a third, the contractor is going to pay their part. And then there was a contribution from Pico that they paid, a contribution basically in lieu of repairing the road after they did their, um, the connections. So they just repaired their cuttings instead of repaving it.
So Nick, refresh my memory, going forward after this project is done, wasn't there some sort of an agreement that the borough would, that we would maintain the road surface, but the borough would maintain all of the, uh, stormwater inlets?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't believe that's correct. Our, our, uh, agreement was, we took Dawson Drive and they took City Line. Everything.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because at, at one point, Dawson Drive was our residence and that island was never developed.
Right.
That's why we, we did that.
Okay.
Years ago.
Okay.
But no, we, we, once we get it done, we're going to have to maintain all the stormwater fixtures.
But I thought, because when the apartments went up, that there was some sort of an agreement or talk about that.
It might be the basin that they own, but I'm, I'm not sure. That was years ago.
Oh, maybe that's it then. Okay, yeah.
Which they're not maintaining.
Is it, do you, in your opinion, do you still think it's still a reasonable agreement? Of cost sharing?
Um, yes, I do, because basically, there are residents that we're servicing. Because the backside is the apartments. So they don't exit the backside. That, that's the back of the apartment, so most of the resident, all the residents are on our side.
Right.
We're in City Line, it's, it's, it's both residents. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty good idea. It's a pretty good maintenance agreement.
Okay.
So.
Okay, um, I do need a motion on that. It just, it fell onto the next page.
I'll make that motion.
To approve that estimate, I'll make a second. Any further discussion?
Nick, do you need Township Line that runs down the side, or is there a City Line near that? That, when you said we did a swap, that we take care of.
We, we do Dawson and they do, and they take care of City Line Avenue.
Okay.
Off State Room.
Okay.
Next to the high school.
Yeah.
Correct.
I got you, okay. I thought it was right near that property, so all right.
All right. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number four is another one for Nick. Uh.
Line striping hasn't been done since before COVID.
Yeah.
Couldn't get the contractors in or whatever, so we kind of went to Guide Mark. I think everybody uses Guide Mark now on municipalities, so we got about sixty-five thousand feet of four-inch single yellow line that needs to get redone. So we're going to wait till after we do the oil and chip, so we don't have to bring them back. So probably if you guys authorize at the end of August.
All right, I'll make a motion approving the east street driving proposal from Guide Mark Inc. in the amount of eight thousand forty dollars. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, um, item number five is, uh, consideration of approval of a one-year contract renewal with Redtail Restoration in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes, so this is the, this, Redtail is the company that does our invasive plant management at our, all of our Township Park properties. Um, the EAC has recommended renewing the contract. We've had them for a couple of years. Yeah.
Okay, easy enough.
It's a budgeted item.
I'll make a motion to approve that con- one-year contract renewal. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six on the agenda here is, um, authorizing the township manager to sign Alloy Five AIA contract. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, discussion?
So Alloy Five is the architect that is handling the, um, their, they did our feasibility study for the municipal complex renovation project. And they are currently in the design phase. The board authorized them to do the design phase to come up with actual designed plans for our renovation project. Um, this is just the, this is the official agreement. The board approved the proposal several, several months ago. Uh, we've been going back and forth, the lawyers have been going back and forth on the AIA agreement and it is now in final form and recommended for approval. Bill has given it his stamp of approval.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions?
I'm just, so I don't.
Mic up.
I'm, I usually review EJ CDC documents, not AIA. But I'm just looking at the insurance requirements and I'm surprised that professional liability is now a little higher. I mean, are we, are we, are we looking at this as like, making sure that we, this is market in terms of, it's two million, sometimes I see five million for architectural services.
I think we bumped it up from what they, what was in the form.
Yeah, I think we did bump it up, but again, this is just for the design, this is just for the plan phase.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I.
For the plan phase, so are these designs that they're going to build, they're going to draft?
They're going to draft them, yeah.
And then someone else will construct them.
Correct.
So if they draft them wrong, then we would seek them, say, go after them for professional liability insurance.
Yeah.
Because this is, that's our errors and emissions insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
They had a, a waiver of that, which we took out. They wanted to limit their liability, that was taken out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so the intent of this is to, we would, we would execute this. I didn't see any costs in here, it's all TBD.
Is, the costs were covered in the proposal.
In the proposal?
That was approved a couple of months ago.
Okay. Is that in, then incorporated by reference in the agreement?
Yes.
It said, the owner's budget for the cost of work is defined in six point one TBD. The other, the owner's anticipated design and construction milestone dates, TBD. And are these, are these things set forth somewhere else that, where they should be incorporated reference into this contract?
Yes, in the, I'm trying to pull up the proposal. Do you want to move on and I'll pull that up and we can come back to this?
Yep. Yep, we'll move on down the agenda and we'll come back to item number six.
Okay.
Uh, that's uh, hold on, one sec. Uh, okay, that motion dies. Move on to item number seven, consider approval of, quote, in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand five hundred for a replacement police car and sixteen thousand, six hundred and two, seven, um, six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-one cents for equipment. Um, I'll let's discuss it. And we'll.
Yeah, uh, it will almost certainly be less than that. I don't, I didn't get the trade-in value for the car that we're getting rid of, so last year, just as a guide, we got forty-five hundred dollars for the trade-in, so that would come off of the forty-three five. And the equipment would just be the outfitting, uh, transferring equipment from the car we had to the, to the new car with some may have to be new because of the model change and it doesn't fit from one year to another, but most of it will be transferable.
Do you guys have any questions? All right, thanks. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the quote in the amount not to exceed forty-three thousand five hundred for the, for the replacement police car and sixteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars and seventy-one cents for equipment.
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, um, consider approval of the Axon Enterprises quote in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents for police body cameras and data storage renewal. Chief, thanks.
Uh, that's for data storage, cloud storage, and maintenance of the equipment. It's a recurring cost that we, every year, pretty much.
All right, I'll make a motion.
This is a budgeted item, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that and do a second. Thank you, Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine, um, approval of conditional offer of employment to Selena Velez to the position of permit clerk, office administrator dated July tenth, twenty twenty-four. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Would you like to touch on that? Anything? Brief. Okay. Any, uh, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we will, uh, briefly go back to item number six, authorizing the township manager to sign the Alloy Five AIA contract.
So the, um, the proposal that was approved a couple of months ago was also in the workspace as Exhibit A. These are norm, these, they would have been approved in conjunction, but we were still working on the legal review at the time of the proposal. So all of the costs are in the proposal and the proposal actually refers to the AIA. And the reason that those items in the AIA say TBD on the dates, part of that was, so the construction commencement date TBD, other milestone dates TBD, those were because of us, actually, because I, they set out a, a schedule and they had construction set for the end of this year and I said, you have to pump the brakes because this project is largely contingent upon grant funding. So that's why that's in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because we're, we didn't want to commit to a bid date that they had proposed.
Are, are there items there, though, that should not say TBD and should instead refer to Ex- Exhibit A?
I ca- um, we, I can have them, I can have them revise that and refer to Exhibit A instead of TBD. The dates aren't going to, which one specifically are you referring to?
Sorry, I'm just looking, I was looking at the insurance.
So the budget, the budget for the cost of the work?
Yeah, one point, one point three.
Oh, it does, it does refer, it says as described more fully in Exhibit A.
Where does it say, one point, one point three?
The owners.
It's in the line above it, yeah. Yeah, but that's only for that one.
Yeah, I can have them fix that.
Should we table this for next month?
Or do we?
Or is time sensitive?
Uh, we can table, I mean, they would obviously like to have it.
Right.
Signed. But sure, we can. We can table it.
Are you comfortable approving this?
I'm having a hard time not taking off my lawyer hat right now and looking at this, cause it's what I do all day. And I know that that's not my role here. But, um, there's some little cleanup, like some spacing and some periods, it looks as though this version still has track, either has track changes on it, was it PDF made of a track changes? It's got the lines in the left.
And I think that's just the nature of the way that we put it into the. Into the workspace.
Yeah, um.
I was satisfied that the numbers were established in the, the agreement and that those numbers would be worked into the documents.
Okay.
My main concern was the numbers.
In terms of the, the dollar?
Dollars.
Yeah. I just wanna look at, can we look at, can I just take a look at the limitation liability provision? Where does that? I've been bitten by architects for big industrial projects, I'm sure Al, you know, Alloy is great, but, um.
I've got no problem tabling it.
Yeah.
Clean it up.
Why don't we table it and?
Yeah, please.
Why don't we table it and you can send me any, any comments that you have on it?
I'm sorry, guys.
No problem. All right, that concludes that one, I suppose.
Yeah.
Great. Um, item number ten, discussion of textile recycling program, Martha, would you like to?
Okay, so yesterday Lori and I went up to Eaton Town, New Jersey, to visit Helpsey, which is a textile, a company that does textile recycling. And the reason why we went there is Patty Lynn from the Chester County Solid Waste Authority, she is the recycling coordinator for them. When we had done our small textile recycling program earlier this year, she said, you know, would you guys be interested in doing something larger? And would you be interested in doing a pilot program for Chester County? And I wanna introduce you to this company that does this kinda stuff. So she said I'll set up a, a tour of this place, so Lori and I went there yesterday and unfortunately their air conditioning wasn't working, so it was a really, really hot day in a warehouse.
I would've loved it.
Um, but it was.
I don't know.
I don't know about that, this was, this was really tough. So, um, this company last year in twenty twenty-three, they did thirty-one. Million tons, I'm sorry, they accepted thirty-one million tons of textile waste and recycled or reused or resold ninety percent, ninety-five percent of it. Wasn't that, wasn't that what it was, ninety-five percent of it? Um, mostly what they do is they keep the textiles as they are and they just find people who are willing to resell them, they're basically a resale, a reseller distributor. They work with, um, large companies such as Thread Up and Rent the Runway and Goodwill and, um. They showed us their sorting facility, you know, when things come in, they said that they receive approximately one tractor trailer load every week and one tractor trailer load leaves every week. So it's just like a big gigantic circle with them. So they sort things by, um, brand and condition and then they box them up based on what, they, they have really close relationships with their customers, um, for what they, they are looking for. And we just thought it was a really nice company, we met with one of the co-founders, um, who's very enthusiastic and very passionate about what they do and, um. I would like to, um, work with these guys, um, I don't know what else to say, I mean, do you guys have any questions? I think that, um, what they do for, what they would do for us, it wouldn't cost anything for the township. They come here with a big truck, if we wanna do an event, they will come with a big box truck, um, they'll pull up and their person takes care of everything. We don't have to do anything except maybe direct traffic, um, it doesn't cost anything. And when they take it back to their facility and weigh it, they actually pay us for it, not much, Lori will probably get a cup of coffee out of it, but you know, they, they, you know, we get paid for, you know, people's trash. And, um, since our newsletter comes out in August, I'd like to do one in the fall, um, if you guys are on board with this and I can take care of all of that.
Sounds like a great idea.
You wanna do it as an event or as an ongoing contribution, is one better than the other?
Well, here's the thing, that's a really good question, Bob, because Lori and I actually had this discussion in the car on the way home. We don't really know, this is the first time we've done this before, so to kinda get a feel for. How our residents are gonna respond to this, we thought doing a one-time event and see how everybody feels about that. And then they also offer boxes, you know, those, those textile clothing boxes that you see? I know a lot of them are trash and a lot of them are, are a hot mess. These people have promised us that they're not gonna be a hot mess if we put one here, Nick, I see you already, I know you're, you're, you're saying, Martha, don't do this to me.
Did you see your cardboard?
I see the cardboard and, you know, I, I will absolutely positively have a conversation with this woman because I will tell her, if I hear one complaint from our roadmaster, you're going to be removing this box. Yeah, I know. I know, I know.
What would the, what would the bins look like?
They're, they're big blue, they're on their website, it's called helpsey.com, um, they're, they're, they're like this color blue and they're, they're big. They have a warehouse in King of Prussia now, so they, they're relatively close by, so I can, I know, Nick, I know, I see your face, I swear, I see your face. Um, so anyway, the whole idea was that we would do this event, kinda get a feel for how residents feel about it. If we get a really good feedback from it, then yeah, maybe possibly put up a, a box here. One of the other things that they do is if we have a lot of residents that would be interested in this, they will do free curbside pickup for you as well.
Do they, do they need a minimum amount to make it worthwhile?
We don't have all the details.
We don't have all the details of that.
The municipal contract service and I'm, so I, I think it would be premature to talk about that.
Right.
As even an option for us right now.
It's, yeah, it's not an option at this point, but it is something that going forward, that's why Patty Lynn wants to use us as a, um, a pilot program. Because if we are pretty successful with this, then we get other municipalities to do this, then we could actually get that curbside free pickup. And it is free, cause I do know that there are other companies out there that do curbside pickup, but you have to pay for it, it's like ten bucks a bag. Um, but this is, this would be totally free, so, um, but did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. All right, so, um.
Sorry, Nick, but I do think it's.
Well, we're gonna start with the one-time event.
We're gonna start with an event, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go, you know what, Nick, you, you may, you may be on permanent vacation by the time that comes around, so, but.
Just curious if the EAC has given any feedback, it's an environmental. Good thing, so, wondering if, uh.
They, they are anxious to hear about our trip, so they, they have. They liked it, so, but, um, no, I have not reported and told them about our trip because we only took it yesterday.
Gotcha.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
So, quick question for you all, doing a one-day event probably isn't gonna turn out too much of a, bring out too much of a turnout, people just aren't gonna show up for that, at least in terms of, if you did like a two-week lead-up. So I don't know if there's any kind of appetite to do another drop-off onsite for a shorter period of time, not three months like it was last time, but just do a two-week to kinda be like, advertise it as an event, but if you can't make it, come drop it off beforehand, it's kind of a thing to try and just spur as much as we can.
Yeah, so one of the things that they did say they would do, and that was something that I was gonna think about doing, they will, they have those, those big laundry tubs with the big wheels, they're like six by six by six. And they said that they would drop them off into the lobby so that, um, if we can have them here for a week or two before, so that people can drop stuff off. So that when their guy does show up on that day, all he has to do is pull out the, their carts and load them up on the truck, so that is an option to do as well, so, yeah.
Is our township staff okay with it? Having a giant bin in our lobby or wherever it would be?
Martha's enthusiasm has persuaded her.
We always have some giant bin in the lobby.
Correct.
Whether it's, whether it's a code drive or a.
Yeah.
Tech stuff thing or.
Make sure Alloy builds in gigantic bin.
We're gonna call it Martha's drive speed.
And she, what's that?
Is this an inside container we're talking about or outside?
Outside.
Okay.
Um, chief, we will absolutely make sure that this does not interfere with any of the code drives, any of the, uh, 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 code blue or food drive or anything like that. We will make sure that it will not interfere with anything that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, great, we'll work on it and report back to you guys.
Great, well, um, we have no resolutions or ordinances to consider today, two-minute reports, um, start with John and work our way back.
Uh, nothing for me, missed another EAC meeting.
Then Danielle.
I'm trying to remember if I attended any meeting since the last.
Was there?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I attended the open, um, space committee meeting and there was nothing, there was really nothing, nothing to report from open space.
Regional plan?
Regional planning committee. Nothing memorable apparently.
Well, next month you'll get to talk about the billboard decision.
What? Yeah, next month we can talk about the billboard decision, no, they, I mean, it really wasn't.
I mean.
They were talking, I mean, they had discussions about sandwich board ordinances and, um.
Sure.
We're, we're talking about bamboo ordinances, I think I mentioned this at the workshop though, I feel like I mentioned this, all this at the workshop, so I, I don't think I have anything to report.
Martha, besides the textile?
Um, I, the historical commission is continuing to work on the mid-century modern, um, um, buildings that they wanna add to the ordinance. They have narrowed it down to, um, I guess about ten of them, I think, at this point, um, so they, they're continuing to work on that. Dorothy Bedford from our historical commission is working on the, you know what, I'm not even gonna try to pronounce the word, um, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary.
Semi-suspensorial.
Thank you.
There you go.
Um, and they're, they're, the county is working with, um, Chester County is working with Montgomery County and the city of Philadelphia. And they're all kinda coordinating events for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth and Dorothy is reporting back to everyone. They're in the very beginning stages of it, so I really don't have anything to report to you guys, cause they haven't really done anything yet, but when they do, um, I will make sure that I report to you guys on that. That's the historical commission, the EAC, um, the biggest thing that came out of the EAC meeting was the, um. That Jonathan's coming before us when?
July.
It is the July workshop, um, to talk about the clean energy plan and some of the action items that he wants to do and have us kind of, um. Not necessarily coordinate them, but, uh, kinda prioritize the list and even take a look at the list and see if there's just things we don't want him to work on. So he's gonna be coming before us to talk about that. And the biggest tree, um, in, uh, in Schuylkill Township was sent out, um, have you gotten any responses yet?
We have.
Oh, fun.
I have to say five with seven of them.
Oh, fun, fun, we wanna see who has the biggest tree in Schuylkill Township, so measure your tree, so that'll be, that'll be fun, um.
Thank you, darling.
And I think that's it, yeah.
Um, who went to planning commission?
Oh, yes, I did, I went to planning commission, but we met with them tonight, um, and that was all that was discussed. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Bob?
I have a little bit to add to the OSC, Open Space is still working on outreach, but they won't have their meeting this month due to a lack of quorum, that's it.
Thanks, I, I don't have anything.
They, I'm sorry, I should've reported on this, the one thing that they did, did discuss at, um, Open Space was whether there was a need for monthly meetings. And they had contemplated maybe doing quarterly meetings, just because it doesn't appear they have enough to, to discuss at the monthly meetings.
All right, thanks, I don't have anything. On to township manager.
So just one quick thing beyond the things that we discussed tonight, but the PennDOT is, I'm sure everybody is aware at this point of the detour on White Horse and Penny Packer. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have an estimate on when that's gonna be done despite my repeated requests to hear when that's gonna be done. They don't seem to be making a hu, a huge amount of progress. The estimate they gave me, uh, a week ago was that it was going to be a month. And the reason it is being closed, the reason they've made the decision to close it, according to PennDOT, uh, it's closed twenty-four seven because they had too many near misses reported.
Yeah, I witnessed one.
So it was a safety concern.
I, I witnessed one. One of their workers, one of their workers got almost sideswiped, I mean, it was like this far.
Yeah.
By, by a driver just, you know, pit, very angry that he had to stop.
Yeah, so.
Are there any future plans for that bridge to be totally replaced and widened, this is just repair, correct?
Correct, and I, I don't know, they haven't informed me of anything.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Uh, all right, uh, chief of police. Anything else to discuss tonight?
Actually, I do.
All right, cool.
Yesterday, we got a call of a large amount of US mail that was thrown in a storm drain up in Valley Forge Woods. Road department helped us out, we got the grade off and we recovered the mail, some of it's from our township, some of it's over in Oaks, it's gonna be another nightmare as we went through about a month and a half ago. Um, they're stealing the checks out of mail that's sitting in mailboxes, wash the checks, write a different amount, different, uh, payday. Sometimes it's in Jersey, sometimes it's in Philly, it, it just, it's a mix and match. We have a description of the car, it was a black Mercedes, um, we're still trying to get some ring camera coverage to see if we can get a better description. Uh, in the meantime, we're gonna be working with the postal inspectors over at the southeastern post facility to, what we, today I had one of the officers run around and identified all the victims, notified them all so they could contact their banks and stop payment. But it's, I think it's gonna be an ongoing thing because they found out that it works, so we'll, we'll do our best, but just to let you know, uh, we'll put it out on our Facebook and maybe on the township website. For people, if you're gonna write a check and put it in a piece of mail, go to the post office, put it inside, don't put it in the blue box outside, cause that got burglarized this past year also and they took all the mail out of that, so. It's a shame, things have come to this, but it is what it is.
I've got a, a vendor in Virginia that I've sent hundreds of thousands of dollars of checks to that were washed and cashed, all insured, we got, you know, nobody got stung, but we went to electronic payment wherever we can because of it.
Yeah, electronic payment is, I think, the best way to go, but with older residents that are not used to using that, it's, it's not, sometimes not feasible for them, but I just wanted to make everybody aware of that and that's all I have, new.
Thanks. Paul?
Uh, yes, uh, just two items, um, just the supervisors know, the, uh, the MS four permit renewal was submitted on behalf of the township at the, uh, end of June. Uh, we haven't gotten any feedback or approvals yet, but, uh, hopefully it's gonna go well. Uh, we haven't gotten any feedback or approvals yet, but, uh, hopefully it's going to go well. Uh, additionally, uh, we're hopeful that there's going to be no need for future PRP plans. So crossing fingers there. And, uh, one thing that I, I failed to mention when we were talking about the, uh, the Dawson Drive is that we've coordinated with, uh, one forty Dawson Drive, uh, Deckman pumps. Uh, Pico will be doing their trench installation on July twentieth. So we wanted to avoid painting the road black and then having a trench pulled right away. So it's going to work out well time-wise that, uh, the road will, they'll put the trench, the connection, and the road will be painted black. That's it.
Thanks.
Um, actually, I don't know, Paul, if this is, if this is for you, maybe not. The traffic light that's out here, you don't have anything to do with traffic lights, do you?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, the timing on it, it's just, it's still terrible, even though we have the, the new radar and everything. I'm still sitting at that light, waiting to turn right.
This one right here?
Yeah.
I think some of that may be due to the road being closed and the volume of traffic.
No, it was part of that. I, I mean, for those of us who leave this office and, you know, ten o'clock at night, eleven o'clock at night, sitting at, sitting at that light, it does, it doesn't detect your car. And so I did, I thought that that was part of the project, the green light.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's definitely not seeing my car.
It doesn't detect cars, no.
What?
It doesn't detect my car either.
Yeah, I, I, I'm definitely invisible. Um, and I don't want to confess this on camera, but I have been.
We presume that people may be running that light.
I, I have been tempted to, to turn right on red.
So it does have that feature that it detects when a car, it's supposed to detect when a car is there.
It might need to be adjusted.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
I don't think that one's been reported. I, I don't know, I'm suspecting perhaps not.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll check into it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll check into it.
Well, that's a.
That would be wonderful. And I'm sorry I pointed at you, Paul. I thought that was yours. Okay.
All right. Do we have any discussion on agenda items for the upcoming workshop meetings? That we haven't already tossed on?
So for July, we have, July, we have the clean energy. I have nothing else. Um, is, will everyone be in attendance for the July? I think you're going to be out of town.
I'm going, I think I'm going to be in Cochrane. What's the date of that?
It's July twenty-fifth.
I, I will be out of the country.
I am also out of the township and unavailable.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll be here.
You're here, you're here, you're here, okay.
Thank you.
And what time am I plugging in for that this month?
Seven.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm going to be not in attendance. It will be virtual. No, we didn't do that.
All right. Any other items?
Not for.
For workshops right now, we can think about it. See where we go from here. We'll, we'll probably have, we'll probably have more discussion on the gas, uh, pumps for a future, for a future thing, so. But other than that, um, seems like we got nothing. Um, I got.
Did you reschedule to talk about plastic bins? Because I know that didn't get talked about at the workshop I missed last month.
Last, you said, plastic bins?
The plastic ordinance?
We did not.
We did not talk about it.
But did it get rescheduled for a different workshop?
It's not.
It postponed for another workshop.
We can throw it on next, on this month. Well, not if you're gone. I guess we can wait till you're back then.
If you want to work on it and have it done by the time I come back, that would be awesome. That would be amazing.
I'm glad you volunteered.
I think you and Martha and Bob can put your heads together.
How'd I open my mouth?
Yeah. No, we'll, we'll talk about that too.
So you want us to add, so we'll add.
Either, either this month or next month, whichever, whichever you think. I mean, we can have a mixed crowd. All right, no announcements?
Actually, I have one.
Oh.
I got, I got an email, um, this morning and I think Lori, you, you got it as well. Um, the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County, as you guys know, uh, they have the lighting ceremony, um, with the tree that they planted here, um, every year. And I got a date for that. Give me just a second.
I think it's October tenth.
Yes, it's Thursday, October tenth. And they are asking, uh, permission from the township.
What date? I'm sorry, October tenth?
It's, uh, Thursday, October tenth. We don't really have a time. We let them pretty much take care of it.
Is that something within Lori's discretion to coordinate?
Yeah. Would you like, um, I can't remember how long ago it was that Amelia came and made a presentation. I don't believe she came last year, but she offered to come and kind of talk to the board about the event and, you know, how it's grown and what she's done. I don't, I don't think we, that we need that. I mean, uh, Martha and I have been there for the past couple of years. I, I just, I think it would be really nice if we could do something to bring a little bit more attendance to it. Um, it's kind of, it's kind of sparse.
Yeah. Let's think on it.
Okay, that's it. I'm sorry, yeah.
Public comment, any updates from the fire department or anything that you'd like to?
We're going to a birthday party in a month and a half.
There you go.
Who's birthday?
The fire department.
Fire company.
Oh, it's the fire company.
Yeah. How many years?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five years.
Do your large corporation or your entity would like to help contribute to that, I would ask them to. They also check on our website.
Thank you. I take it there's no more public.
What are you guys doing?
Oh.
Throw a birthday party.
But I mean, what, like, what?
Cake stands?
Lots of cake, ice cream.
No, no cake, no cake stands.
I can't go upside down anyways.
Do you need a band or, uh, have any gambling?
Show up!
All right. It's a surprise birthday party. Everybody's surprised when they get.
It's really, uh, it's all based upon contributions from private donors, so.
Yeah.
If you want to.
We'll see where it goes, yeah.
Cool industries, industry, career.
It's like when someone's holding a party, they tell you you have to bring the cake and your food.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do your second.
Second.
All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.